With County Board Supervisors, July the 8th meeting to order. We have Mr. Don Smith here from Ruby Creek United Methodist Church to do the invocation. Everybody please stand and remain standing and act of invocation for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Shall we pray? O gracious God who governs both the vastness of the universe and the intricacies of our lives with truth and honor and justice, we pray that you -- with those things that you have granted to us that come to us in this hour, we might become faithful in using that same truth and wisdom and justice and dispensing it with the things in which you have entrusted us. We give you thanks for all these things, asking your presence in this time together, in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I welcome everyone that's in attendance tonight. Thank you for coming. We'll move right along into the agenda. We have citizens' time. We have two citizens signed up. The first one signed up, Mr. Wayne Beasley. If you would state your name and your address, please.
Wayne Douglas Beasley, 2522 Austinville Road.
Austinville, Virginia. Gentlemen, ladies, I'm the owner of New River Campground. Sometime this last winter, we had a leak in the campground. At that time, we did everything we could to fix it. I talked to Mr. Baird about it, and we was under, he told me, a six-month prorated program. Now, I don't know where y'all was this winter, but I was in Austinville, Virginia, and we had one of the worst winters we had. I probably couldn't get a thing in the ground until around April, and I couldn't do anything about the leak. But the head gentleman over the water department or over the field told me that basically he thought it was running to the well, that I hadn't connected right to well. So we finally got him to dug up the well. It wasn't running to well. We had connected it just right. Everything went just fine. He took a picture. He said, "I'll be back with you." Didn't say when. He said, "I'll be back with you." Now, since that time, I went and tried to find the leaks. As it got towards spring, the leaks come evident where they were. We fixed the leaks and called. He said, "You still have a little leak." Well, I couldn't find it, but we done a couple of things, including rerouting all the water in our facility that's where we can get to without digging up approximately 9,000 feet of water lines. Now, about a month ago, well, it was a month before I ever knew that there was leaks, so we run out about $2,800. I think it's kind of ridiculous, but he said, "We can't be running across the country telling everybody to have leaks." But I think it would be something different done about it that you would find out or be notified or something. I said, "Haven't you got --" I asked the field man, I said, "Haven't you got anything to show leaks?" And he said, "Yes, but we don't know how to work it yet." I said, "Well, can you help me in any way?" "No, you have to do it yourself." Since that time, it's run, I guess, about 3,800. It's still gaining. On the 3rd of July, they cut the water off if I wouldn't pay them $3,800. So, I don't know about you, gentlemen, but $3,800 is something that I can't write out every day. So they cut the water off. Now, I do believe that you ought to be some kind of a differentiation so that I can pay this thing off at least in a six-month period. They prorated in a six-month period so that I could again have county water. You know, I've got rental buildings and everything else. Y'all have went from $300 to $1,000 till come. I have a little hard trouble believing that in the last year, that labor and cost that goes from $300 to $1,000, seemed like common sense has left our governments. But I claim that we, that New River Campground, should be allowed to go under at least a six-month program, prorated, to pay off the debt and not receive a letter on the 1st, 2nd of July, whenever it came, that send us $3,800, or we'll cut your water off. If you run a campground, that just about kills you. So my fourth wasn't that great. Neither is going to be on from now on, but did connect on to the commercial well, because I do own a commercial well inspected by Richmond that says, "I have better water than y'all do." But anyway, I cut the water on, changed the routing, done about 500 feet of pipe, and I think I have it down where it is all right now. And I was saying to the With County to believe that I should be able to go on the plan which was in effect when the water leak occurred. It's only fair. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Beasley. Next person to sign up for citizens' time is Ms. Lynn Myers. She has two subjects to talk about.
Yes, good evening, gentlemen. I received my flyer from the With County Farm Bureau this week. I don't know how many of you are Farm Bureau members, hopefully you are. And there is a notice here concerning EPA proposed regulations, and I would like to see, I'd like to give this to you, and I'd like to see With County, on behalf of all the constituents in With County, draft a resolution to oppose this EPA and Army Corps of Engineer rules and regulations that they want to impose on us. This is supported by the Farm Bureau, and it's a great intrusion. So who wants this and who can do it, because it's really, really important to protect our private property rights and the water here at With County. Okay, that's issue one. And today I became aware, we were talking with some other peoples, about the illegal immigrants, the children that they're trying to put all over the place. And it seems that Virginia now has a refugee coordinator, and I didn't know if you guys knew about it. I have her name, phone number, and email address here. And it also says that we should contact her and find out what they're planning in case they think they're going to drop people here in With County. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Ms. Myers. Having no one else sign up for citizens' time, I'll close citizens' time. Moving on with the agenda, we have minutes of the previous meeting. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion. We approve the minutes as presented.
I have a second.
Second.
I have a motion, second. Any corrections or amendments to the minutes. Here and now, I'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Willis?
Aye.
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 The chair votes, motion passes, six with one absent. Next item on the agenda is payment of invoices. Can I have a motion?
Mr. Chair, would I make a motion?
I have a second.
I have a second.
I have a motion and a second, any invoices that any board member would like to discuss. Here and then, I'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Horne?
Aye.
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 Chair votes, motion passes, six with one absent. Moving right along to old business, we have the economic impact study with Mr. Rapin. Good evening. Glad to be here.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair Reeves, and members of the board. I see some familiar faces from when we initiated this project back in February. Glad to be here and give you an update of what we've accomplished over the last four months. I'm just going to make sure my slide projector is working all right. It looks like it's advancing pretty well. For those who were not able to attend, and I did bring some handouts for the audience in case they wanted, I'm just going to drop them here on the chair and feel free to take a copy if you wish. We will sometime in the future post on the Weldon Cooper Center for Public Service that presentation along with the final report. I guess I should also recognize a EC, Mark Muncy and Matthew Miller are here. Is there anyone else?
Buddy Johnson.
Buddy Johnson. So they were also at the first meeting, and they gave a little presentation introducing my introduction. And at that time, I had some figures from a feasibility and marketing study that they had done by a series of consultants, including Virginia Tech, and we used those numbers. And since that time, those numbers, their business plan in particular, has been updated, and they're looking at being operationally breaking even in the second year, which is in contrast to the first feasibility report when they were looking at the fourth or fifth year. So instead of using the old numbers, we incorporated these new numbers. It did not change the number of events and nature of events that they wanted to host at the facility, so that remained intact. But I'm going to show you some of those numbers in a second. Here is the format of the presentation. I'm going to talk a little bit about the Ag Expo Center characteristics. Briefly, the methodology, I don't want to go into too much detail because I think you're ultimately interested more in the numbers than the gory details of how the numbers were generated. And then we'll show you those results and with a summary and conclusions. So the purpose of the study, well, we wanted to estimate the economic impact of the Ag Expo Center. And there are three different important components of that. One is the construction, but of course, that's temporary. It lasts about a year, and all those construction workers come and then they leave. What you're left with is the facility operating, which is relatively small in terms of personnel that it has. Their current business plan calls for two full-time workers, and they're going to contract out most of the other labor. And of course, they're going to spend in the community on supplies and materials as well, initially more and tapering off as they get that inventory up. But the most important component is the visitor spending, and I'll talk a little bit about that more later. So what do we want to look at? Basically, four things: output, employment, income, and important, I think, to y'all are tax revenues, local tax revenues estimates, and also state tax revenue estimates. So if you go back to the original feasibility and market study, Virginia Tech said that With County is well-suited for the Ag Expo Center, and it can attract a variety of different events, including equestrian, sports, sporting, livestock, and trade shows and things of that nature. What they're looking at, you see here are the features. Indoor arena is the most important, that's a centerpiece of it, and also an outdoor ring, three barns, and the estimated cost now is a little over $5 million. You see here a breakdown of those construction costs. The big difference in the cost in the original plan is that there's much less in there for excavation, site development, infrastructure. However, I've produced two different reports that use the original feasibility plan and this plan, so they can pick or choose which one of these reports they need to submit with their grant applications in the future. Center operations, up to five years. It starts up, revving up, they, as I mentioned, more supplies and materials, and then it levels off at about 340,000. On the other hand, the events that are hosted, they ramp up gradually over time, and that's important in realizing that those visitor impacts are going to grow with the number of events that are hosted. And they will ramp up to about 50,000 over the five-year period. Okay, so we took those numbers and we had to attach dollar figures. We have dollar figures for the operations and construction, but we had to attach dollar numbers to those visitation figures. So we used a lot of our own data, and we did the statewide equine study, looking at a variety of different shows, venues, racetracks across the state, and we narrowed the events that we had data on to ones that are similar to what would be hosted at this facility. And we determined that they would probably be of statewide significance. They wouldn't be like the Virginia Horse Center of national significance or even international significance. If you look at, you know, some of the shows that they host are, you know, east coast, they're bringing people in from all over the place, which isn't to say that you couldn't over time build into that. But for our purpose, we wanted to produce, you know, fairly conservative numbers that are believable numbers. And so we didn't build in any expectations that this would become Las Vegas tomorrow or anything like that, okay? So we got data from our equestrian center for all the equestrian events. We did some new survey work for the Virginia Catamounts Convention up in Harrisonburg. They had this past spring to get an estimate of what people were spending on their livestock at the event. And I think it's important to realize, I didn't know for sure going into this, but for livestock, it's less of a sporting activity and it's a livelihood, and so, you know, keeping the costs down are very important. So instead of contracting out the work, the owners do it themselves. So if they have to spruce up the cow or, you know, the steer or whatever, they do it themselves. They groom it, they feed it, they bring all that stuff with them. In contrast to the equestrian folks, they buy a lot of stuff, and they're sporting enthusiasts, and they're showing the animals, and they spend a lot on the animals as well as their own equipment and their own hotel expenses and that sort of thing. So it's more of an upscale type of activity. The third source of information, we have fairly limited data on, well, we do have some data on these other types of events, but we use figures from the Virginia Tourism Corporation for this. They do a statewide study, and so we just extrapolated their numbers to the sporting and the trade show type events, what we're calling sports and entertainment and those categories. Okay, so the figures, this issue, travel, you can see here in terms of expenditures, what is spent by these different types of participants, and you see the equestrian pretty high there. It's unbelievable what they spend, but it's true, and we saw that pretty much across the state. But it differs on where they're coming from. If they're local, not very much, okay? If they're in-state, well, they have to travel, okay? And they have to stay overnight. And if they're out-of-state, they have to travel more, and they typically stay longer, and they have larger parties, party sizes. Okay, another thing that we did in looking at the market feasibility study, we looked at the estimates of visitor attendance for the different types of events. That was something that the board asked at the last meeting that we sort of benchmarked that to see if they're still realistic. And they're very conservative numbers. We called around to some benchmark facilities in North Carolina and Tennessee, here in Virginia. And you can see the averages for each of these four types of events, and also the, what we're calling the mean, that's the average. And what was in the AAA fifth-year estimate, that's the second column there. And probably the closest one is for the sports events, 1,100 on average in the market feasibility plan compared to 1,500. Okay, so since these were a little bit, well, they were, some of them are a lot bigger, we scaled up some of the estimates, and so we produce, as you'll see later, a baseline estimate of visitation impacts, and then an alternative that assumes that you experience some growth on the order of 5% to 15% each year in those other events, those other type of events, non-sporting events, the equestrian livestock, and the entertainment and consumer events. Okay, so what do those numbers look like then, when you use what I showed you previously? You come up in year five, in the base situation, about 2.5 million and 3.4 in the alternative. And, you know, I'm going to explain where those state and county numbers come from here in a minute, and they're different. But you're probably most interested, from your vantage point, what's it going to do to the county? It's great that it helps the state, and I think when you're delivering a grant application to the state, they want to see what it does for the state. Okay, a little bit about the methodology. We do something called economic impact analysis, and we use a tool called input-output analysis. And I don't want to go into any of those gory details, except to say that it produces a multiplier. Now multiplier is just a recognition that if you inject a dollar into the economy, it sort of circulates in that economy and gets respent, okay? And part of it leaks out of the economy, part of it gets saved and doesn't reenter the economy. So for instance, if a farmer sells a dollar worth of hay, a bale, or, you know, $100 worth of hay to somebody outside the county, that could potentially generate 46 additional dollars. And why does that happen? Because that farmer pays an accountant to do his taxes, he buys his utilities, his electric, his water, you know, sewer from various service agencies in the region. And so that money is, becomes part of that $46 that you see. That's part of that multiplier effect. And he also pays his labors, and they go and they spend money in the economy. So that's all reflected in that $46. And we used a software tool called Implant to do that. And we basically took those numbers that you saw, we categorized them for the model, we mapped them onto the sectors in the model, and we generated numbers. Now, a few things to keep in mind when we did this. We don't count local spending. We don't count people from the local area that are going to use that facility, because from my vantage point, that is money that would have been spent in the economy anyway. It's not a real net expenditure for the region, okay? If they weren't going to the Expo Center, maybe they would be going to a theater, and maybe they'd be going to a restaurant, maybe they'd be staying home and eating popcorn that they bought from a local grocery store or something. But it would still probably be spent in the local economy with one exception. If it results in people staying home to take advantage of the entertainment opportunities here rather than going to, say, Salem, Roanoke, or Bristol for some sort of concert or event. If that happens, then you could say, yeah, it does, that local spending part of it does represent sort of an injection to the economy. But we don't have any solid numbers on that. I talk in the report about how you would estimate that, but we don't address that. Okay, we also realized that some of the spending in that center is going to be realized as revenues by the operation itself, and it's already reflected in those operational impacts. In addition, some of the vendors that are there, which is just a fact, are from outside the area, okay? And so they sell their wares, they get all that money, and they leave. So we don't count that either, or at least we make adjustments so that we don't count that. But we do count some of it, because some of that will go to local vendors. Okay, so that's what we do for the local area. One thing we also didn't adjust for, there are going to be people that come to the community not because of that center, but they're here for some other reason, and they'll visit the center. These people are called casual visitors, and they could be here for reunion, they could be here visiting grandma, an old folks' home, they could be here for a wedding, they could be here for any number of reasons and then go to the center. Well, their primary purpose for being here is not to be at the center, so they would have been here anyway, perhaps spending money. So what they recognize, what analysts recommend is that you not count those people, but again, we don't have any figures on that, except when we asked people at the Rockingham event, at the cattle event, virtually everyone was there for the purpose of the cattle show. About 85% or so of the people at these equestrian events are there because of the equestrian event. On the other type of event, we don't know. We just don't have any numbers. We'd have to do some original survey data. Now, for the state, am I in the right slide there? That's what I was talking about there. For the state, we only count expenditures that are new to the state, okay? If people are living in the state, they're already spending money in the state, if they're already attending events that are going to be attracted, just moved to the center, well, that's our, if you get that event, the cattle event that's being held up in Harrisonburg at the Rockingham County Fairgrounds, well, that was already in Virginia, so it's not a net addition to Virginia, so we don't count that. However, we do count any expenditure made by these visitors within the state, unlike when we count the local economic impact. When we count, look at just the local area, we're only interested in what they're spending in With County. When we're looking at the state, we zoom out, take into consideration all that spending. Okay, so results, the part you've been waiting for. With County, construction economic impact, injection, 3.4 directly into the economy results in about 4.3 million economic impact. Fifth year total, about 3.8 million in the base situation, 4.5 million in the fifth year, and over the whole period, considering the different years and construction, almost $20 million. Terms of employment, construction, about 47 jobs total, including 39 that were directly related to construction, eight additional spinoff jobs in the community. Fifth year, pretty similar, the bulk of that being visitor impacts of 48. So over a five-year period, you build up to an impact similar to the construction impact. That's in the base situation. In the alternative, it's 71. Okay, let's see here. Virginia, these are going to be smaller numbers generally, except for construction. The construction number impact is only larger because the dollar circulates in a larger economy more than a smaller economy, or fewer leakages. So that's 6.4 cumulative impact, about 17 million. Virginia employment impacts, they're smaller for the reasons that I just cited, that we subtracted a lot of things out of there. Tax revenue, it is about evenly divided between With and the state over that five-year period, about $450,000, $500,000 cumulative. Alternative, just a little bit more. Okay, so those are quantified based on the survey data and the data in the business plan. Some other impacts that you might realize from this, and some of them are speculative, they're in the report, things that you would observe, you know, things that are good for the community. I tried to quantify using some data we have at the center. We did a statewide outdoor survey for the Virginia Department of Conservation and Recreation. I just so, also happened to do the state equine report in which we, you know, we tallied up where all the places are in the state that host these equine events and how many events they hosted. So I joined all that data together and did a little bit of modeling to try to estimate what those venues do what those venues do to community participation in exercise, in equestrian exercise, and there's a relationship. And I don't expect you to understand that table there, which is basically a statistical regression analysis. But if you look at the variable labeled events, it's a number that's positive, very small, but that's just the way the particular model works. But if you use the numbers in that model and you do a simulation of boosting the number of equestrian events in with county by what is supposed to be about 24 if you include the rodeo, the bull riding, and all the rest of those that we included in our analysis, then it would, it's associated with a boost of about 3 percent in participation in equestrian sports, which equates to about 400 with county households that may be motivated to participate in equestrian sports and horse riding and competitive, some of them in competitive horse riding. Why would they do that, you might ask? Well, it's sort of the same principle behind building, you know, a playground or some sort of a physical education center. I gather you all have built one or participated in building a community center. I don't know if you ever collected any survey data before and after, but you probably saw people were exercising more because they had access to a facility. And that's partly the reason why you would observe something like that for a facility like this. The other reason is just, you know, people don't have the same level of familiarity. These are still pretty exotic sports for some, I mean, before I came to Virginia, I'm from western Maryland, Appalachia, you know, we don't, we don't do a lot of equestrian-type sports there, but living in central Virginia, I see it all around me. So, you know, you maybe become motivated, you get more curious, you are more likely to take up an activity if you see, you know, all kinds, all the kinds of remarkable things they do with horses. So that is, you know, an effort to put a real number on something that people just talk about, okay? So maybe something that you could expect. And why, you know, this may have health and wellness benefits, you don't think of it, you don't think of it more of a sporting venue, but it can be used for these purposes, it can be used for youth recreation, it provides an indoor venue for large, you know, for gatherings that require a large space. We had some folks in the audience, one of which said that it would be good for holding graduations and, you know, if they couldn't have them inside, that there would be enough seating capacity to do that. So, you know, it could be used by the community in a variety of different ways, including ways that maybe you never envisioned for in the future. I mean, it, when you first set out, establishing the vision for this. And, you know, can definitely be used, since this is an agricultural community, you have a relatively large ag center centered around livestock, it can be used for workforce development in the ag area, natural resources area, can be used to promote your ag and other industries in the region. It also offers some new business opportunities because of some of those spinoff businesses that result. Now, when I generate the economic impact results, there are impacts that are going to be, result in with county somewhere. But with careful planning, you could, you could focus it on the corridor or the area, the intersection, wherever it's going to be built. And some of the opportunities that might be realized close to there, there's going to be almost million-dollar, anywhere from 600,000 to 840,000 food services and drinking place impact. Hotels and motels, half a million to 700,000. Promoters and performing arts, these are the people that host and put on these shows and exhibitions. You may not have a well-developed presence in that industry right now, but there are opportunities, you know, rather than import the people that do that locally, you can cultivate the talent that people would be hosting those sort of things, those events. And support activities for ag, these are things like farriers, groomers, breeders, boarding facilities, other ag-related stuff, and gas stations. So those are the, some of the things that we were able to quantify. There is a report, and I don't know if that made it into your packet yet. However, I will be, once I receive all the comments back, and we've got one, one set of comments from Mark Munsey and the board, if you have anything you'd like to add, it is still in the draft stage and we'd be happy to incorporate any, any information that you have. So thank you, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Repan. Does anybody on the board have any questions? Mr. Dalton?
On your impact, food services and drinking places, hotels, motels. With the limited number of motels and food services out there in the county, is that a total impact because all the real money, town of Wiffle has a lot of restaurants and things, and they collect the meal tax and transient lodging tax, there's, it didn't appear in the study that there's a real breakdown based off of those numbers.
I do have some numbers in the report on what you would expect in terms of hotel, motel, and meals. I can pull those numbers.
I saw them in there, I just didn't know if there was a determination based off the 200 rooms in the county versus the 3,000 rooms in the town.
Oh, where it would be divided between those two? No, I didn't, I didn't even attempt, attempt to do that, that breakdown. And, you know, it's going to partly depend also where this center is built and what's close to it because, you know, let's say it's in the north of the county, somewhere in the vicinity of 81st exit. I don't know what you really have there, you know, a lot of it's down toward Wiffle here, so if there isn't, you know, a modern hotel there, you know, I don't think people are going to want to travel 10 miles to get, you know, they want to be fairly close. And if you look at Lexington, at the Horse Center, those hotels are within relatively close proximity to the facility there.
Speaking of that, I guess if it wasn't, if it was out in a remote location without a lot of hotel, is there any data out there, like at Lexington or Chatham, that, once it's built, that that spurs some type of support industry such as hotel, motel, restaurants?
That would really, that would call for, I think, another type of a focused feasibility study looking at the hotel. There are, you know, there are databases that the people that do those studies utilize to make their predictions of whether there's adequate traffic and whether enough traffic would be generated by a facility like this to merit a new hotel or any other sort of, you know, visitor-related amenity. So I guess in its favor, is that, is that the intersection, 81, wasn't there a major retail development there at one time? So, you know, it suggests somebody, I mean, they didn't put it there for, it was not successful, but they didn't put it there without having done some sort of, you know, planning. So there's something, something good about it, but maybe not for the purpose that they designated, so there, there needs to be, you know, maybe a different type of focus, focal point there. And maybe, maybe this is it, but this really doesn't address, you know, what would happen at that particular intersection. Early in my career, I did, my dissertation was on the economic impacts of highways, interstate highways, and there's a large literature on, in the early stages of the interstate system where you could, and now, you know, major companies have site development companies do this sort of planning, but they could predict based on the location of population and where the interchanges are, you know, what you could expect in terms of gas stations, shopping. And of course, over the next 40, 50 years, they build it up using those models. And some of them, you know, they're, you could pull out the equations today and say, well, you know, what, what, that intersection really, would it support today even without an expo center? That would give you sort of a baseline idea of what, what it could support. And when you put something like this in it, you're creating some traffic and you're creating potentially some of those things that bring the highway users off the highway, you know, to get gasoline, to get a bed to stay overnight, to get a meal, and, you know, causes sort of a chain reaction. There's some sort of external, we call agglomeration effects, and they just sort of feed off each other and, you know, sort of mushrooms, so that, that's sort of the dynamic of what happens sometimes. But what the exact seed is, I don't know.
Yeah, I agree that there's a, if you can find the right people, there's, 30 years ago, did some consulting for a firm that located truck stops, and they had pretty scientific data of volume of trucks and projections, and that's where they were going to build. So had a plan laid out across America, and they pretty much followed it, and I don't know if there's any more truck stop sites available in the world, but, so, but you never know what that seed, the instigator of development really is.
Any more questions?
No, it's just the...
Mark, Buddy, Matthew, do you have any questions? Thank you, Mr. Repan, for your report.
I guess one question, if we have any comments written, when do they need to be in so you can finalize the report?
Yeah, if I get them by next week, I know they have grant application, they need to get in here pretty soon, so I'd like to get some hard copies to you mailed out by the end of next week if that's possible. So any comments if I can get the latest beginning of next week. Okay. Now I've gotten four last month, but they're still kind of...
Okay, moving on under all business other, Mr. Dalton, we have anything else under all business? Okay, moving right along, we'll go into new business, building grounds committee recommendation. Mr. Hale?
Building grounds committee met last week, and the following results is that we recommend negotiation with Austinville Limestone Company to swap some land to relocate the convenience center, since we're going to be displaced by the trail. That was one. And two of the like is to award removal, except to bid from D.H. Griffiths Company for the abandoned tank at 151 Carbad Lane and the one at 135 Slabtown Road to accept their low bid and proceed with work.
Okay, we got three things from building grounds committee. We'll take each one on one at a time. Coming from the building grounds committee, it doesn't need a second. We'll go with the first one, 225 Newtown Church Road. Negotiate with Austinville Limestone for the swap of land for the convenience center. Any discussion? Here and now, I'll do roll call vote. Mr. Willis?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion passes, six with one absent. Next item, next item from the building grounds committee is the 151 Carbad Lane to accept D.H. Griffiths bid and propose with, proposal with removal, proposed with removal. Any discussion? Here and now, do a roll call vote. Mr. Horny?
Aye.
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 Chair votes aye. Motion passes. Next item is 135 Slabtown Road to accept D.H. Griffiths bid. Any discussion? Here and now, do a roll call vote. Mr. Willis? Aye.
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 Chair votes aye. Motion passes. Anything else from the building grounds committee? Mr. Hale?
That's it, that's all.
Okay. Moving on, Jen, we have appointments. Mr. Dalton?
We should have a handout there of several appointments that need to be made for most of our reappointments except for the Wiffle Community College.
Okay, the first one is the Mount Rogers Planning District Commission. Transportation, Stephen Burr's appointment has expired. Have a nomination to reappoint Mr. Burr.
I would get one.
Have a second. Second. Any discussion? Here and now, all in favor of reappointing Mr. Burr to the Mount Rogers Planning District Commission, say aye.
Aye.
Propose, like sign. Mr. Burr, you're so appointed. Next one on the appointments, New River Regional Water Authority, Mr. Dalton, his term has Have a motion to reappoint Mr. Dalton to the New River Regional Water Authority.
I'll make that a motion.
Have a second.
Okay.
All in favor of reappointing Mr. Dalton to the New River Regional Water Authority, say aye.
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 Propose, same sign.
Chairman, if I may?
Yes.
If you would refer the, and a request, I guess from myself, to create an alternate for that position, I'll, I will never finish this four-year term, and we need to start getting somebody as an alternate that can go to those meetings, that can pick up on that. If you'll just refer to the Water Committee so they can discuss that for appointment of alternate.
Have a motion that we appoint an alternate to Mr. Dalton's on the Regional Water Authority.
If you'll just, as chairman, refer that to the Water Committee and not make that appointment today, let them talk about it.
Okay. I refer it to the Water Committee. Discuss it. Recreation Commission, Mead Lewis? Has, have we talked to these people? Are they willing to serve again on the Recreation Commission?
I suppose there are individual appointments from each district.
I haven't spoken to them. Well, if they won't accept it, we can reappoint them and we can inform them that they don't want to serve another term, we can, we can look for somebody else. Have a motion to reappoint Mead Lewis to the Recreation Commission. So move. Have a second.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Mr. Mead reappointed. What's that next one? John Sisti. Have a motion to reappoint John Sisti to the Recreation Commission.
I'll make that motion to appoint John Sisti.
Have a second.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Next one is Donnie White.
Mr. Chairman, I would like a motion to report Donnie White.
Have a second.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign. White's appointed. Social Service Board, Board, Miss Nancy Jackson. Have a motion to reappoint Miss Nancy Jackson to the Social Service Board.
Is that Nancy Jackson my area?
Yes, it is.
I would like a motion to report her back to the board.
Have a second.
I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign. A Virginia First Regional Industrial Facility Authority, Mr. Joe Hale. Have a motion.
Hold on a minute. Let's talk about that one.
Yes, Mr..
Mr. Dalton, what, what do we do with that group? I get a volume of emails. They meet a lot.
I have asked county attorney to look into, we have, except for being a member and paying dues, we, we're not active with their development. Two members have been allowed to drop out, I think it was Salem and the Town of Naris. And I've asked county attorney to look into what the process is for that.
Why don't we help him along by not making that appointment?
Okay.
And Mead. Okay, we'll skip that one. And we'll skip the alternate. Okay, Whiffle Community College Board, we have two openings on the college board. Open the floor for nominations.
Mr. Chairman, before the nominations start, we've had an application in the past of Danny McDaniel and a second person, Dickie Morgan, who used to, who's, works in construction now, but used to be the civil engineering, I don't know if professor is the right word for Dickie or not, but he taught down there for a lot of years. So, those, I'd just like to throw those two names out there of people. Dickie's from down in Coy's area, I believe.
Mm-hmm.
So, now I'll pull for nominations.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to nominate Danny McDaniel.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a nomination for Danny McDaniel's and a second for one position. I'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Horne?
Aye.
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 Chair votes aye. Mr. Danny's appointed to the, to the college board. Okay, we have one more position. I'll pull for nominations for that position on the college board.
I'd like to nominate Joseph Wilmer Dickie Morgan. The word he was looking for was adjunct.
Okay.
He, he taught at the college for quite some time. He's been a business owner, and now he works for a local contractor.
He's living in your area, Gene. Who is it? Dickie Morgan?
No.
Is that the Dickie Morgan on it?
Not if you think he lives where Gene does.
But he's in Gene's district. Well, my district covers three quarters of the county, so.
Is that the same one?
It is.
He's in Spiegel district, I'm sorry. But he's close to me.
He's closer to you, though, Coy.
Yeah, by a bunch.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
And we have a motion and a second. Okay, remember his name, Danny who?
Dickie Morgan.
Dickie Morgan.
Morgan.
Morgan. Yeah, I'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Horne?
Aye.
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 Chair votes aye. That's our two college appointments.
Mr. Chairman, I believe it'd be proper for us to thank Mr. Manley for serving on that, and also Mr. Pendleton. They've been on there, what, two terms?
Mr. Dalton, will you draft a letter from the board thanking?
Letter, resolution.
Resolution.
We normally do, or have one. That's what I thought.
I'm going to have it for the next board.
Thank you, sir. Okay, under other, does any other board member have anything they'll spring before the board at this time?
Just brought up now. Yeah, everybody should have a letter from the Whiff County, actually from the Rural Retreat Whiff County Fair Association. Basically, it says, "The Rural Retreat Whiff County Fair Association requests that you waive all fees associated with necessary building permits for the fair, which is to be held August the 6th through the 9th. Thank you for your consideration in this matter." I would make a motion that we waive those fees, whatever they are going to be, if there is any fees.
I have a second.
I'll second it.
Motion second to waive all fees associated with the Whiff County Fair and Rural Retreat. Do a roll call vote. Mr. Willis?
Aye.
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 Chair votes aye. Motion passes. We also have a, a letter from Pulaski County inviting all board members to family picnic and swim, elected officials, for elected officials, officials on Sunday, July the 20th at 4:00 P.M. at Ranoff Park Pavilion, if anybody would like to attend that. I didn't, I haven't been, but they say it's a pretty good event. Under, else under others, as the water committee took up, I'd like for the water committee to take up Mr. Beasley's complaint at the water committee meeting and regional water authority and see what can be accomplished with that. Yes, Mr.?
I see Mr. Pinky's coming back there, and Mr. Hoover. Mr. Hoover.
Mr. Hoover?
Oh, okay. We made a decision here a couple of months ago, I believe, and I, they called me about it, and I don't, I don't know really what to tell them. Did we have to wait six months before we bring it back there?
What, what was it to?
About May Apple.
May Apple Lane, that property out there.
The forty-third right of way.
Mr. Hoover, come, come with you.
Well, ain't that many people here tonight.
I got a lawyer last time, you know, two years, and they, you know, they're okay. I was here, you know, see what, say their workplace.
Mr. Dalton, will you refresh our memory on this?
I'll try. Mr. Fair.
Yes, that's Stevens.
I, I can tell you a little bit.
My understanding on May Apple, they're saying right of way becomes perpendicular off of May Apple, almost to the north. That is, how wide it is, they'd ask for that to be abandoned. The decision forward was that the, the board has a policy to do abandoned right of way or vacated right of way. They just want it abandoned and revert back to the end of fair market value, and that was what the board decision was. We got that far, Stevens, now. What was the price?
I don't have my laptop in here with, the, the right of way, it says value of the surrounding land, which I believe was $7,500 a lot, and this was forty times, the lots over there are eighty by one fif, fifty by one fifty, and this alleyway was forty by one fifty, roughly eighty percent of a lot. So, point eighty times, and I believe it was seventy-five hundred, I want to say seventy-two fifty. Thank, yeah, purchase price is fifty-eight, a hundred dollars for that.
I have pictures on me. If y'all would like, the board would like to see the pictures that I took of the land. I mean, it's nothing you can deal with or nothing like that, but it's just a hill.
Mr. McRoberts then went and looked at it, and they said it went and worth around maybe five hundred dollars, and they all were given for it. And there's a tree actually on the property, and there's like tires and everything on it. And if you actually tried to drive on it to go up the right of way, you would never be able to. It's not usable at all because it's like straight up like this, and then out through there. And when we actually got the property, we weren't told that there was a right of way there. We thought we was behind the whole property. And after we purchased it, we found out that there was a right of way there.
Would y'all like to see the pictures?
I, we, I'm just saying, you want, any board would like to see the pictures.
Yeah, we can bring them.
We would just like to have at least a decent price because that property is not worth even maybe eight hundred dollars.
And we were supposed to send you a letter about the tire day?
Yes.
Did you get it?
I have not received it.
You, you say the tires is on that property?
Yeah, the tires.
On the right of way?
Yeah. There's a telephone toll on that right of way too. And there's a tree, you know, it's, it's never been used for a right of way, that I'm aware of.
If I'm remembering correctly, your attorney sent in an offer of $1,000?
Yes.
Was to bring this off.
Yes.
I mean, I'm going to pay that.
And our mobile home is actually sitting on the right of way. Whoever inspected it okayed it to be there before we bought. We cannot do no grading or nothing to be able to move in this home due to the fact, you know, the right of way is there, and we don't want to disturb it, you know. But I would like to get my daughter in our house soon.
Mr. Dalton, I'm going to send this to the building and grounds committee, and the committee can go look at it and make a recommendation to the board. I've sent, I'm going to send it to the building and grounds committee and let them go out and look at it if they want to, and they'll make a recommendation back to the board of what, and calculate what a fair market value is of the property.
Okay. Would you know exactly about how long that will take?
The next building and ground committee meets.
First, first Tuesday, I think.
First Tuesday, and.
We've got some other issues. We'll probably have a call meeting on that.
We'll probably have a meeting this month.
Other issues, buildings, fire, emergency service buildings, stuff, other results.
Okay, does anybody else have anything to bring before the board? Mr. Dalton?
Yes.
Okay, I declare this meeting adjourned.